Ready?
Okay. Recording.
Hey, Madam clerk, good call.
Mr. Campbell and Mayza.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Franchco.
Absence of probably on the phone. All right, thank you. Full house here today. Just for the record, we are being recorded, so if we call on you or you're speaking for any reason, please state your name and who you represent and where you're from, so we can have it on the record to make sure we capture everything to be, make everything legal here with what we do. And for the record also, we've got more than 20 people in the room. Looks like closer to 25, and I appreciate that. This is our workshop, August 15th, in preparations for our regular meeting tomorrow, which will be at 10:30 a.m. in this room. Because of some pre-arranged obligations, we're going to start out with our Human Resources Director, and there's an agenda item that's not on here now. They're in the process of crafting it, but we're going to go to Alex first and hear what she has to say.
Good afternoon. Alex Dean Jonesy-Bush, Human Resources Director. As everybody knows, as of Monday afternoon, uh, excuse me, Monday morning, we are going to be having to do some restructuring in the Commissioner's Office to figure out how we operate in this year in absence of a clerk who is now on paid leave. So, Commissioners, this is our best. Within 24 hours, I apologize, this is what it is. I've given you a proposed new org chart to where we would bump people. The job descriptions have been, you know, revised to fit everybody in where they need to be. They're included in your package. Obviously, we're looking to have Lisa Blair be our interim clerk. We're not going to be able to fill at all our assistant clerk. That has to remain vacant for at least a year. We are looking to bump up Christina Stein, who is our only Journal Clerk right now, to a Journal Clerk two. We then would have a vacant Journal Clerk one position, which I have here with all the pay ranges for you. The office assistant is optional, but this staff needs support. So basically, what we're finding in the Commissioner's Office is we're down two people as in they have bare minimum support at all. I am proposing that we do allow an office assistant. They would come in at a pairings four, minimal jobs, help with just relieving the clerical duties of this staff so that they can just function. And then everybody else is the same. So...
We had two Journal Clerk ones.
We did.
So you're proposing removing one of the Journal Clerk one positions and replacing it with the office assistant?
Not necessarily. So, that's a good question. So Christina Stein was a Journal Clerk one. She's remaining in her Journal Clerk custody. We're just proposing that she goes up to a Journal Clerk two. She's going to be assuming a lot more responsibility in absence of an inner, uh, excuse me, in absence of an assistant clerk. So I'm actually proposing a new position to help fulfill the clerical duties of the office. However, that's optional. To remain at a bare minimum, we at least have to post a Journal Clerk one position and promote Chrissy to a Journal Clerk two. And of course, acknowledge Ms. Lisa Blair as our interim clerk.
And the office assistant will be an office assistant, not a Commissioner's assistant?
Correct. No. Yeah, and the job description is here for you. So the office assistant, excuse me, the office assistant will actually be a floater. So it literally says that they will only be doing work for the clerk, and they will also cover for the scheduler and the receptionist if they're not here. They will answer phones. They will be a backup for the scheduling and receptionist. All that's really based in the job description. All right?
Let me ask you, is there any way, we have the Journal Clerk two and Christina in there, and we were to post the office assistant, can we hold off on the Journal Clerk one as far as going out the bid for that? Because what about if we see that the office assistant and Journal Clerk two were able to operate without that other Journal Clerk position? Plus, it would be a favor.
We could. We could give any thoughts on that? We could try it.
I mean, that's kind of what we're operating with.
Give it a try.
Now, Lisa and Christina were working together, but they had a clerk above them.
Right.
And they were still overworked. Now we're moving her up. We're kind of moving Christina into kind of like a pseudo assistant clerk.
Correct.
That leaves us literally with no clerk tomorrow. I can't see how that could function to, for her to do what Lisa used to do.
Sorry to be seen or probably...
And what she's doing.
There's no...
And what she's doing now. And then we think we're just going to replace it with a pairings four, go further. We're just going to throw the work on. I mean, I, I really think...
Well, let's go ahead. I mean, we could try. Here's the reality, guys, is this is so new. Lisa really has, obviously, she's been here for a while, but she's going to be new in her role. I have only been here four months, so I haven't done, to be quite frank with you, a feasibility study on this office. I haven't needed to until this point. So this has all happened pretty quickly. But I can tell you, what I would probably recommend, just knowing what I know, is preferring, keeping that one optional and at least looking to fill the Journal Clerk one. If you're going to make a decision based off that, I would say let's fill the Journal Clerk one.
Well, then why don't we do that? Why don't we look at Journal Clerk one and two and move Christina there and then hold off on that office assistant until we've moved the office?
And that one is optional. I identify that as that. So let's see where we're at. But we know that we're at least going to be in it.
One at a time?
Yep.
But her job duties are going to be about the same, but just more. That's where the two comes in, and they're going to get a repost for a whole new everything. This is...
They are more, and you can see, so we have an interim job clerk here for you, or an interim clerk assistant. And then you can clearly see the difference between a Journal Clerk who assists the clerk with all of these job duties versus a Journal Clerk one, who has significantly less job description one, so responsibilities, okay? So with that being the case, then tomorrow, I'm going to proceed to put on Chrissy as the interim clerk. You guys can vote on that tomorrow. And then I'm also going to propose that we promote Chrissy to a Journal Clerk two. That'll be for a vote tomorrow. And last but not least, that we're going to advertise for a Journal Clerk one in that whole round.
And she's outside of her probationary period. She's been on long enough where she can qualify for Journal Clerk two without any, any of the rules or anything like that.
Well, the last time we had a Journal Clerk was 2006. So it is extremely outdated, and no, there was no prerequisites in that job description, and actually, that job description was nearly non-existent. So I don't even really want to go there. So this is a whole new...
Okay.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
All right?
I do too. Very good.
Thank you, guys. I have to go. I'm sorry.
I guess one last thing while you're here, just before you go. Because of yesterday's news and stuff that was on there, we have been getting a ton of requests for people to get more facts on the case.
Yes.
So I don't know how many dozens and dozens. I know I got a bunch. Tomorrow, probably get a bunch. The office has been inundated today with people that want to read the depositions of what happened in the case. And that was probably because I said, before you make judgment, read, read what went on, and I think they should. We're going to look to make available at least Paula's and Commissioner Franchco's deposition. Those are the ones we already had that were emailed. One is 377 pages. Another one is, another ridiculously long one. So we're trying to figure out how we can do it electronically at no cost. If they wanted it printed, I mean, there's costs. If they go through the courts to do it, it's 10 cents a page. You can imagine with 377 pages, it's even the size of a quarter page in some of, some of the courts. But we're going to do what we can to make it available as quick as possible. It's not an instant thing. It isn't something that we just have where we can, someone could call and she just shoots it right out to them. But we'll work anything to that point, so everybody can have access equally to read what they want. The other depositions, unfortunately, were not, there's videotapes, but they were not ordered by either party to watch. So someone would have to pay the cost of that if they wanted it, which would be exorbitant, or...
Chris, I don't want to interrupt, but I want to be very clear because this is lawsuits and pending. We don't have the video at all.
Right.
The video was never requested. There was never a video taken by on any of the deposition. So to be very clear to everybody in the public, video deposition don't exist, is what I need to clarify our court system. Those are not an option.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The other ones, the other deposition, some of the other witnesses, the courts will have them in the record, and you'll have to go to the court to get that, because we don't have copies yet.
Correct. So I will have a blanket document that I have that I'm getting created. You know, it'll be very clear what I can fulfill as a public records request and what I can't fulfill as a public records request. So very clear like this, basically, the settlement and press releases are I can fulfill as a public records request. Outside of that, if I don't, we don't have the deposition on hand. You will have to go, whoever's requesting it public, can go out and create a paper account through the Northern District Court. You have to put a credit card on file, and you have to pay in advance for every company who's you're asking for. Okay?
And also with this too, we just want this to go away, because we don't want to do any more undue stress on Paula. This is done. We don't want people bothering her. We don't want people hounding her. We don't want her to have to keep reliving this every day of her life when she's supposed to be out healing now. So that is something we would ask all staff. I mean, if you know her, give it some time. You want to send her a card or something, or reach out to her, but just please be cautious that, you know, this is something that, imagine if it was you, you wouldn't want to be bombarded with stuff. So we please ask that you allow her to do that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll start with our regular agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Dispense of the reading in a minute, approve the bills, establish the renaming of Fund 969 to Services for Homeless Youth and Homeless Pregnant Youth Grant for use by the Trumbull County Combined Health District. Trumbull County Combined Health District receiving funds from ODH, filling 110,00250 for use in the funding of this program, per recommendation of Health Department in cooperation with the Auditor's Office. Anyone here from the Health Department? And then Martha Yoder?
Um, just, you know, whenever we have funds, we have to have a fund for them. The reason we're renaming a fund is they have a numerical procedure that they've gone through where they only do funds within certain numbers, and so they're taking an old fund and just renaming it to use for this.
Number four, additional appropriations, Commissioners, ARPA 332-849.
Right. These are ARPA funds, as it's set, see, 150,000, 84981 is for the Fairgrounds Office Drainage. 117,000 is for the Fairgrounds Horse Barn Roof. 65,000 is for the grant for the Mesopotamia Memorial Historical Society.
Uh, number five, to approve decreased appropriations, youth subsidy grant FY23, 4560, and 303,000, 358.
All right. This is just decreasing the appropriations. So what happens is we have, you know, we, there's an anticipation of being able to get a certain amount of funds that's put into the system as budgeted as appropriations. It's not going to be utilized, so we decrease the appropriations.
And then transfer appropriations, Board of Elections, 7459.
All right. That is oversup, um, sorry, operational supplies. Remember, these are transferred within a fund, line item. So we're not transferring fund to fund on any of these. So the Board of Elections is operational supplies to employees, PERS and Medicare. Adult, I'm just making sure my list is course running through. Adult probation is to fix an overbudget, social services, communications equipment. The Prosecutor's Office is again to fix an overbudget, consultant to communications equipment. The veterans is a transfer to fix an overbudget, Memorial Day expenses and grave markers to computer equipment. The veterans, again, is a transfer of travel and transportation to employees and burials. Law library is to fix an overbudget, furniture and fixtures to refreshment services, non-capital seminars, training in schools. Common pleas court is 582, seminars, training in schools to transcripts. Job and family services, 5,000 is, is, there is an actual account called Two Other Funds. So that's the account, to licenses, permits, and refunds. The dog kennel is office supplies to equipment maintenance, sanitary engineers, there's a number there. Did you want to go over these? Do you want me to? I can't guarantee that.
Oh, you can, yeah. I think Bob Baruchewski wants to.
Yeah, he does. He's got a lot here. Let me, um, let's see if I have his, I have his email, so I can do it. All right. Sanitary engineers, the fund 600 for $600, which is kind of, um, increase for HEB and T-DAP shots from the Health Department for new employees. The budget adjustment in 612 is for additional sodium bicarbonate for the Bracewell Pump Station. Budget adjustment of, and fund 602 for 50, 50 is suit sanitary to remove sledge for the package plant. Our tanker is in the shop. And $20,000 for 602 is additional funds for equipment maintenance for the supervisor. And 609, $10,000 is additional funds for distribution means per the supervisor.
Thank you, Honor Yoder. Number seven, receiving place on file monthly activity report for Trumbull County Dog Count for the month of July, as submitted by Michelle Goss. Number eight, step to resignation of Mr. Dustin Rivera from his position of labor with Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective August 9th, as resignation letter shall be recorded in the Journal for record purposes. And we wish Dustin much success and happiness in his new role. He's resigning to go somewhere else, or?
Yes, he, um, that's our understanding. We didn't get a whole lot of details about it, but it was pretty much an abrupt resignation. Didn't give us a whole lot of notice about it. But he is going off to, what he says, a higher paying job.
All right. Approved change order one, final, with Utility Contracting, Inc., submerging around Youngstown Contract B for the Mineral Ridge Hydraulics Improvement Project, known as County Project Number Two W-15, located Mineral Ridge Public Water System. Weather split down from the amount of $18,082, revising the contract total to 1.186865, to be paid from the Ohio Department of Development of Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Grant. No general funds utilized. And then there's the breakdown of the $18,000 and where it goes to. And then this is per recommendation of CT Consultants and the Sanitary Engineers Department. And Gary, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer. I brought Scott with me today, my assistant Sanitary Engineer, and this was his project. And, yeah, we were going to request that we just hold items nine and 10 to the end of the workshop, since they're rather lengthy.
Okay.
Especially that item 10. And that's why we brought some consultant engineers from MS Consulting, CT with us too, to explain, especially that item number 10.
That'll be fine. We'll move on.
All right.
Okay, number 11, approved purchase service contract number 22108, buying between Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and Nesco Resources, in the amount objects seen 66,500. This will go from June 1st, 2023, to June of 2024. Nesco LLC will provide employer of record and payroll services directly related to employment of one program participant for the Ohio Business Resource Network Grant Program. John Gargano.
John Gargano, Job and Family Services. Yes, Commissioner, as you've indicated, Nesco is going to be the employer of record, and through this grant fund, they're going to be hiring one individual for that program, and he is to gather certain information for these employers of record and provide those services, and it's no cost to the Commissioners or the county. Only for one year, the grant.
Okay. On that, Martha?
Okay.
Number 12, award the proposal as submitted by Stepmobile, 18 West Fourth Street, Mansfield, accept payment by financial transaction device for Trumbull County Adult Probation Department, and enter into contract with Stepmobile for said services. Company shall furnish all equipment, services necessary for installation, operation, and financial transaction device as defined in the ORC. And I believe we have to be with the Adult Probation here?
Hi, Trace the Great House, Trumbull County Adult Probation Department. We realized in 2020, in Section, ORC, Section 301 to 8, the Adult Probation was not able to collect funds through a credit card. It does say that the Trumbull County Court come and plead for this event in the court's office. So we have Senate Bill 63 passed by the Senate and the House to allow Adult Probation Departments in a county of the state of Ohio to collect supply credit cards. In doing so, we did RFP. We only have one bid, so they're a winner. So we are asking to have them step forward to be our credit card users.
All right.
I do apologize. We have a meeting at 3 o'clock maybe.
Give more than one.
Absolutely, yeah. Anybody else that, that needs to go, that's already gone, asleep and...
Then anytime. Number 13, incur with Trumbull County Senior Services Advisory Council's recommendations, and the Senior Levy Administrator Diane Siskowiczer-Kowick, CPA, for distribution of senior levy dollars for community senior centers, and authorize distribution agencies as listed for a two-year period commencing September 1 and ending in August, or 23, and ending August 31, '25. And the amounts to be awarded as follows, 619,704, year one, 619,704, year two. Okay, this is back, this is the same exact as last week that you have here. I don't see 625. We talked about raising the cap and doing, I guess, we'll get to the floor first.
Well, after discussing this with Prosecutor's Office, the Senior Services Advisory Council members, 11 members, that are appointed by you to make recommendation on these, all of the Ohio Revised Code protocol, and by, once they release their public, the public meeting, they release their recommendation, that then has closed the ability to negotiate. What happened last week in the workshop, there was an actual visit that had occurred. So that would be outside the rules under our RFP program. And the prosecutors stated that if the, let me stop here. If the Senior Services Advisory Council's recommendation is not followed, then I believe there to be a problem with the proposal process. And since highlights the reasons differently in the future, and recommended that instead of doing a deal bid proposal that we've been doing, started in 2007, that we go to a, like what the sanitary engineers do, an open bid at a meeting with your price, and you expect it or you don't expect it. I have a big problem with that, because you're dealing with senior services, it's always about the best load of price, multiple vendors requesting funding with the office that is available. My negotiations could occur before that public knowledge is made, not the recommendation is made to public. Negotiations can occur to change that unit price, if the Advisory Council is required to meet with the vendors, but they have that opportunity under RFP 30720.
But we don't have that opportunity. I'm sorry.
You can, you can talk. You, you...
Okay. I'm Laura Carey from the Gerard Multi-Generational Center. I understand that the process has changed. In the past, there was much more openness on when the bids were opened, and that has changed for the last couple of cycles.
Because of the Ohio Revised Code laws.
Because of the Ohio Revised Code laws, and people were aware of the unit prices and, and the bids, all of that. But if the Commissioners are the people that are, have the final say on the allocation of the funding, I don't understand why you wouldn't have the opportunity to be able to ask questions and, and have some say in those prices, because they have been changed in the past. Award amounts have been changed in the past from what recommendations have been made for a variety of senior services.
All right. Let me ask you a question, Diane. You may know this, you may know, may not. This might be Prosecutor's thing. If we were to shoot this down tomorrow, would that make you go back to the drawing board and reopen bids and do it again?
It's all over again. Your copy out of the office. It'll see if we had any copy out that allowed to extend, and we don't have that.
They've been extended in the past.
But it's not in the current contract. You know how the prosecutors review all the contracts. That's not... I can make this comment. Give the trust 11 members, in time, looking at bids, doing those bids, do those on their own time, weekends, evenings, together at the council, chat with each other, discuss their reasons why they award the way they do, and they come up with a recommendation they bring to you. They spent time on this. Heard negotiations for maybe a half an hour.
Let me, let me ask Gerard a question. And I, I talked to two board members, and they, they told me the reason that they voted this, to give you 61,000, the reason from two board members was, they said, well, Gerard has their own senior levy tax money locally, so they get additional funds from the city also that none of these other communities get. Is that true? Do you get additional supplementing to your, and I'm, I'm just asking because that's what the board members, when they said, well, Gerard's a little different. They get their own money too. They tax their citizens once, and then we're going to tax them again, you know, through the senior levy, through being a county resident, or sales tax. They just thought, that's why they, with the 35% decrease that you guys had, and everyone else got an increase, they, they kind of viewed that a little bit. That's what I heard from two boards.
Well, that's a correct statement.
Okay.
Because they're being awarded what they used for the last two years. A decrease in what they...
Okay, no, but as far as what they got, the amount, I guess, is...
So, can I just explain? Laura Carey from Gerard Multi-Generational Center. So, the Gerard Multi-Generational Center started in 2001. We were very instrumental with Area Agency on Aging and the Commissioners in passing the original Trumbull County Senior Levy. After that was passed, our, our, our center was originally funded with federal dollars that were earmarked funds that Congressman Trafficant got for us. When that funding ran out, we went back to the city of Gerard residents and said, what the Trumbull County levy can provide for us will not keep this building open. We have 110, well, 100-plus year old building that keeps light out of the city, plus we provide all of these services. And if you think we're important enough to keep here, we asked them, so in addition to paying your county taxes for senior services, they passed a levy just for us. And ever since that time, our citizens are trying to be punished for being willing to support in addition to. Just because we get money from them, we have a larger budget, because we have, we have a three portion old building that we have to take care of, as well as, again, I don't believe that they've ever answered the question that you asked, Commissioner Malloy, how many more people might we serve than McDonald's? So I just don't, I really, I get upset that my people continually support both levies over and over and over again, but they're going to be asked to get less money from the senior levy of Trumbull County, because we, they're willing to support us additionally. I, I, I just don't see how that's fair.
Do we have any board members from Gerard? Are the 11 board members?
I don't know currently if we do.
They are not. They are not. They're from McDonald's.
That's one thing, I guess, in the future, we can kind of look at too, is making sure that we have equal representation, as much as we can, for these senior centers too. That's a little bit of a curveball, because, you know, we, we offered last week the restructuring. If we legally can't, then we're in a little dilemma if that's not legal for us to do what we did. And with the deadline of August 31st, we surely don't want to hold the process up so that all these senior centers get screwed by not having... And with the deadline of August thirty-first, we surely don't want to hold the process up so that all these senior centers get screwed, um, by not having the funding if we don't hit our deadline. So, we're in a little bit of a trick bag here, Mark, what are you, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I certainly understand what, um, what Laura's saying and what you're getting at, because, I mean, it does seem like that there is this notion that just because you passed the levy in addition to, you know, that, that the city of Gerard is, is all in and committed on this, it shouldn't be, you know, much shortchanged in any way. Um, difficult situation, I didn't know we were getting a legal opinion, that's news to me. I, I didn't know that that was, uh, that we had to do, that, that, that negotiation process I thought was, was open and clear and transparent in, in our, um, in our workshop, and, you know, there's a legitimate concern on the part of the center. And we as the board of commissioners are just trying to respond to it, so, um, and we saw that the, the obvious decrease in funding, year to year to year, and it's glaring, it's a thirty for, thirty-five, forty percent decrease. We, as a board, tried to act on that. Can't happen legally, I, I don't know where we go.
I guess this is a little unique too, because in the research I did last week is, you guys have a multi-generational center, where these other ones are more or less senior centers, and yours is, yours is better. I'm saying yours, yours serves more people, all ages, in a lot of sense, but I think that might get mixed up in the data, might get jumbled in, as far as your accounting of ours compared to McDonald's or, or Scope or one of the other ones, I, I think that we might be looking at apples and oranges somewhat. Doesn't mean either's wrong, it just means maybe we're not on the same page with this, and maybe the board there isn't on the same page with understanding all that either, I'm, I'm guessing.
Just to, because our, our name is the Gerard Multi Generational Center, we opened up, um, it's Laura Carey again, we, um, opened up in two thousand and one, um, with, um, federal dollars, um, from the Department of Education to run a multi-generational center. Um, once those federal dollars went away, we do some intergenerational programming, and we have partnered with other partners in the past, but all of our funding pretty much since two thousand and seven has been senior funding, and that's the focus of our services. I mean, we have, um, PWE football and cheerleading, they use our facilities outside, um, but they don't pay us anything, that's just kind of a community service. We don't count them in our numbers, we only count what we can get reimbursed for, either from you or from, um, you know, um, from the direction home, um, and other communities, and, and other senior centers also get funding, other funding, um, from United Way.
Why, why are you, why are you guys, right now you are getting five thousand dollars more than any other six-hour center? Why are you not an eight-hour center?
We are an eight-hour center, we're open from eight to four, Monday through Friday. Um, Diane was saying they looked at some of our programs, a lot of them are concentrated in the morning because that's when my seniors like to come. Every center has its own different flavor. We do offer afternoon programming, um, we do pickleball in the afternoon, we do, um, we have an eight-week grief counseling session coming up in the afternoon. Um, we, again, used to have a, a meal program in the afternoon. Our exercise rooms are open, our social worker meets with people in the afternoon. I do matter of balance classes when I'm doing them at the center, those are all afternoon classes. We are there from eight to four, people can come in and get help from our social worker, or just ask us questions, get information and referral. Um, so, we do offer programs or services all day long. We are there, my staff is full-time, I can't just cut them back and think that they're going to stay. Do you know how hard it is to get a licensed social worker and keep them?
Let me ask Diane, well, I'm sorry to interrupt. How much was it that, was the difference again from the, we were gonna make it up to the, what number again, was it seventy-six?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one, it was ten thousand.
Right. Now, why, why are they classified as a six and not an eight? Is that something you classify, or?
It's this funding amount, it's, it's seventy-eight thousand, they're eight hours.
I mean, what, but who decides whether it's a six hour or an eight hour?
They can still be over eight hours, it's just that funding technology.
Laura Carey, commissioners, can I ask you another question? Um, because Diane had at least suggested before giving us at least the other six thousand dollars? That's off the table as well?
I don't know, that was my next question. Is, we are at six nineteen, and you said we can go to six twenty-five, you're allowed to spend on that? Can we, is there room for negotiation in this, because we understand Diane's not speaking on, Diane, she's speaking on behalf of a board of eleven, so we have to respect that.
I understand that.
She's just a messenger.
That would be money that would be left on the table, left.
The other comment made was no other vendor was afforded the opportunity to make this argument as.
But no other vendor, no other vendor was cut in their funding, everyone else got an increase in their funding, they're the only ones that was cut. So, I would say they don't have a case to make.
Cut as, as opposed to what they requested, not cut as in what they used.
Right, but if you look at what they got last year to what they get this year, everybody got more, Gerard got less.
Because that's what they showed their usage at. So, when the council requested what to award, it was also based on what their path to usage. They were requesting more, and they were using more in the path, but didn't get paid for that. I have them send me full invoice of services so we can see what isn't getting paid, so we can see what kind of demand they have. And can prove why they need the funding. But Gerard, last year contracted seventy-one thousand, the last two years contracted it seventy-one thousand, and didn't use sixty thousand.
Out of the new ones.
So, that's why this council went like ten thousand, sixteen thousand.
If it's based on program and use, how did any of the new ones start out at a six? Or when they all start out at a four, until we see what they actually use and what they actually do?
The brand-new ones?
Yeah.
The brand-new ones are at four hours. Location and, uh, location. Those are four hours. Thousand four fifty. Give them the opportunity to also. I would ask to be a six hour. Cut to, based on.
Excuse me, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Um, I think we talked about, if, if I'm, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I am trying to remember from last week's conversation, there's a lot of back and forth. Um, and we're talking about that six thousand for each year that's there, that, you know, it's six twenty-five instead of six nineteen. Um, did you say, and I could, again, I could be wrong, did you say that it could be revisited later based on billing? Uh, maybe revisit and, and award more later if, if their billing is, you know, say in six months, if their billing is, or, or close to the end of the year?
There's language in the contract that said at each quarter is reviewed. If an agency, any of the agencies, not senior centers, are only at, they're not at forty percent of their contract, or whatever monthly increment they should be at, if they're not there, we can reduce their contract.
But can it be increased based on bill, based on?
Well, then we, we freed up some funding, so.
And, and you have a little bit, although you have that leeway of the six frame.
And still, we still have the opportunity to go to six twenty-five, where is that additional money now? If it's not going into this?
It's just, it's in the, the carryover fund.
And, and can we address that, can we do anything with that carryover fund?
Was the other vendor's worth giving an opportunity, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer.
Well, all right, look, at the, at the end of the day, we're talking about seniors in a community that's very committed to, right? I mean, obviously they have their own, I mean, you say that they have their own levy, this has been here since the inception of the levy, they helped to pass this levy. The seniors there, I've seen it with my own eyes, I've said this before, are very committed to the center. Maybe the commissioners can always look at other funds to, to bridge the gap. If we, if we feel that strongly about it, obviously the prosecutors is, it's, you know, I don't want to say throwing, that they're, they're giving us an abundance of caution in what we should and shouldn't do, and I appreciate that. But at the end of the day, if the commissioners see a need here, I mean, by no means is this squandering money, this is going towards our seniors. So, and, and one of our first and most successful senior centers. So, at the end of the day, if the commissioners see fit to augment or supplement, uh, the funding that they've, that they will receive from senior levies, we can do so. Have the prerogative to do that through our own funds, so, um, yes, Julie, go ahead.
I may. Um, just a, I don't know.
I was gonna say that as well.
So, now ARPA money can be used for a structure, anything that's eligible.
Isn't that?
Share that.
And I mean, we're not talking, and at the end of the day, you can say, well, that's gonna open the door to all this other stuff. At the end of the day, we're talking about our seniors, I mean.
And we're, and we're talking to pay grants.
Right.
Well, that's not worth the paper if you're gonna put on to do an ARPA grant for ten grand. I mean, with something like that, I wouldn't think.
If, if it's gonna go towards the betterment of our seniors in a community that's proven to take care of them, that, that, and no, no offense to other senior centers that are just starting out, but they have no proven track record. We don't know if they're gonna succeed. We know that with this, with this community, with this center, so, um, that's something we can definitely just look into and, and discuss.
Thank you.
And this seems like this could be our third, most utilized, the third largest center. And the program, the program cost, the program per year is less than a lot of the other ones too. We're looking at that way.
Your total cost of operations divided by the numbers of programs, which would drive your costs down.
Right.
So, I'm offering more pro, planned programs, I'm offering more programs, I have changed that from what we had in the past. Um, sorry, Laura Carey, Gerard Multi Generational Center. But also, um, interestingly enough, in this round, um, the Levy Advisory Council has made some adjustments to this bid, and, um, with the requirement that now you only have one person who has to attend to make it a program that's reimbursed. I am more than confident that I will absolutely positively be able to build for everything that I bid for.
Well, and what we don't, what we don't want to happen tomorrow, and I, I hear exactly what you're saying, we don't want all these centers now to say, okay, here's the rules, we're bid, we're billing everything next year, we're building programs out the kazoo to make sure we get the money. We don't want this to be a race for the money.
No.
We want it to be fair and equitable distributed.
Absolutely.
I think what we need to work towards is, like you said, if they have a need for it, we help them come up with the money for it some way. If it's not senior levy, if it's not revisiting this, if we can't do it that way, we make a pledge to do that, and at the same time, I think because they are gonna be the third largest, you know, that maybe with your help, when the next position comes open to be appointed to the senior levy board, we look for someone from Gerard. So, you have fair representation on the board. I'm sure we have people from Warren, I'm sure we have, um, I know we have someone from Johnson, um, I'm sure there's someone from Howland on there. So, I think these are things that we have, we as a board should keep in mind and work with you to find a candidate that could represent you on the board in the future, so, they're at the table negotiating for you in that meeting to do the best for Gerard at the same time, rather than us have to be referee up here like that.
We can definitely do that.
I would even, just to ma, make it even more fair and transparent, you could even, we could even carve out, if that, or, if Julie and I saw the new, uh, guidelines that have come out, but if those new guidelines can't include senior centers, we could even carve out a section of the ARPA funds and do it equally among these. I mean, all these centers could use this money, it's not like it would be going to waste. So, I mean, that is something, I'm not, I'm just.
Anything eligible under state D B C has a huge change.
I, I think that's a worthwhile use of the dollars, obviously.
Well, what we want is a fair and equitable resolution with this, is that gonna meet the needs of Gerard a little bit if we went that route?
If we went that route, I'm, I'm, I'm more than I.
Well, we agree too, we should not be pitting one center against another.
Correct.
I understand, because we all have our needs, absolutely.
I, I'm sorry, John Redinger, I'm chairman of the board for Gerard Multi Generational Center. Um, they brought up, the advisory committee said that we have our own levy. I think there's not one person on this page that doesn't have the right to go out into their community.
That's right.
That says, please sponsor us. Gerard not only probably goes sixty, seventy percent with the Trumbull County issue when that comes up, we go eighty-one percent.
On your own.
Eighty-one percent, people believe it, but we should not be penalized, because we believe in seniors, not just Gerard, but all Trumbull County.
Well said, very well said.
And we've had the state come in, we've had the governor, governor send us, because it says you are a model center, and they have used us, as, so has, uh, Trumbull County, they've used us as a. So, why the advisory council doesn't think we're as important, I don't understand it. Because, like you said, we used to have to prove it, you used to have to have at least four or five people in a, to approve it, but now they're just saying one person shows up. Well, I don't think we have a program out there that doesn't go way beyond that, way beyond it.
I have a legal obligation that I have to take care of unfortunately, so, um, I'm not to excuse myself for the meeting.
Maybe back, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully we can be back, but, um, I apologize. So, continue the meeting as is.
Sure. No, not a problem, it's not your fault. Okay, so, let's go with that, this is the way it is, Diane, thank you for getting a, a prosecutor's opinion, because we do wanna stay legal. Um, and as you saw last week, we do wanna help you, we did, what's fair is fair. I'm not an eleven-person board, but like Diane said, there is an eleven-person board that has a right to say something, if we could reopen, if we had more time, that's what I would recommend. Or shoot it down and renegotiate, but I, I like what Commissioner Cannon-Lamese said, um, we will work with you over the next couple of months, at least first quarter, to see where you are with that funding-wise, and, uh, plan and budget as if you had that extra money now, and we'll, we'll work with us to find out, if you need it, we'll be there for you. And at the same time, work with us to find kind of a candidate in the wings that would love, like to serve on the board.
I can do that.
And then, when that comes available, when the board gets to appoint the next one, Commissioner Cannon-Lamese and myself will, uh, try to work the best we can to find somebody to represent Gerard, thank yous.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you Diane for the work you put into this too. There's a happy medium for this, we're all, we all care about seniors, and whether they live in Gerard, or Warren, or Niles, you know, we, we need to care about them all equally and, um, and do what we can within the law. Okay. So, then that should be approved as, as written, as approved by your board tomorrow. Uh, number fourteen. You guys are welcome to stay, or you're welcome to.
Commissioner Malloy, can I ask a real question?
Yes.
Uh, I just noticed that the only other commissioner who was attending this meeting has now left.
Yeah.
Is that one of your cause issue in this meeting?
It's, it's, it lost its, uh, it lost its credence as a.
Should you have adjourned the official meeting before he left?
Pardon me?
Should you have adjourned the official meeting before he left?
I don't know, but he's coming back, so that's one thing I'd have to.
How is, how, you're moving forward?
Well, they're not actually, excuse me, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, they're not actually deciding anything.
Okay.
So, as long as they're not making decisions.
I don't have a problem with it, I just hope somebody who likes.
Well, if we fall one meeting short for the year, we're gonna have a hundred meetings, over fifty we need to have.
Right.
So, this one would be, you know, the part that we came up to when he was here or whatever, you know, we, really, we didn't decide really on anything, moving anything forward.
No, and I, I don't know that you're going to necessarily.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we will either.
But.
I know we won't now with him here now, but that's a good point, I thought the same thing. Should we adjourn, should we not adjourn, I don't think we need to, should be back, and I'm still gonna hold the meeting anyway for the public and answer questions.
Rachel, what do you say, what do you talk about why he's not here maybe?
Uh, I can talk about anything, my idea is, yeah.
Right.
Well, I did, I expressed my decision there.
Yeah, yeah.
But no, no binding decisions can be made?
Correct, because I say it's not gonna happen, we're still gonna review the items.
Right, and the decision, most decisions don't get made. The only decisions that you've been making are passing things on for legal opinions, and we're not doing that today. We're not doing any of that right now, so, um, that I think.
Now, we did at the beginning of the meeting discuss this, which. Now, we did at the beginning of the meeting discuss this, which we, we won't vote on until tomorrow.
Correct.
But we did discuss it, that was legal at that point. Okay, number fourteen, the approved lease agreement number six with the United States Department of Ag, to renew the lease for twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty net usable square feet at Trumbull County Ag and Family Education Center. The USDA will pay the county annual rent of thirty-three thousand seven fifty, uh, twenty-eight, twelve a month, fifteen dollars per square feet. Amount number six extends the lease for an additional five-year period, uh, commencing December first twenty-three to November twenty-eighth, and authorize me as president of the board to execute the lease agreement. Hey, Sheriff Taylor, I believe you have some info on this?
Yes, I am Sheriff Taylor, and I have Tim Hannaford here to assist. This is an actual, um, part of ARPA clause, and GSA, which is General Services Administration, Congress set that up to, to have a centralized federal procurement and property management agency like in charge of them. So, and they wanted ultimately go for a long release, but GSA have to approve it, which is back with the ARPA clause, which literally is about TikTok and the internet. We do not have, I, I sent it to, um, Bill Danzow, and he didn't have a problem with it, because there again, the federal government, they do not want any TikTok, so, okay, that's fine, but we do not control their internet. So I, I, I addressed my concerns with Tim Hannaford, and he's a little bit concerned, so I called Chita Ryder, which is the lady that, from USDA that I spoke with, and she indicated that we are not the only building in the country that doesn't control the internet there. So it's just a clause that GSA mandates be in there, although they know that we don't have the control over that. So I just wanted to explain that situation, we aren't getting two dollars more a square, um, they wanted to do five years. Ultimately, they wanna do a, a lease for ten years, so once we get to that stage, um, that we're, we're okay, it's just a renewal, as just as Bill Danzow said, it's just.
Okay, now they, USDA is gonna pay us, but OSU Extension and Solomar District and everything, they, they go in on that bill, or do they pay us also? Or U, or USDA covers for all?
No, we, we. Yeah, we, we literally just get a check from USDA every month.
Do they sublet it out to the other entities?
That I don't know, I don't know how that goes, like, I don't know if they're paying them, what that, what that all entails, because I didn't start out with this, this is kind of just. It is by me, so I don't know the, the original details of it. But just concerned with the amount of the tour footage that they have, that they use, that they pay us for.
Right, and you have a copy of that lease?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll read that over after, okay?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any input on that, anybody? Hey, fifteen, Trumbull County Planning Commission is requesting that the board, Trumbull County Commissioners authorize Danny Malloy to execute an authorizing letter for Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership to be the lead applicant and apply for the lead safe Ohio Program County Allocation, oh, I'm sorry, for lead mitigation and prevention, lead safe. Uh, funded through the State of Ohio Department of Development American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds. Andrew?
The Trumbull County Planning Commission, I'm here with Andrew Vescovis, our new employee, I wanted to introduce everyone. He is our new environmental coordinator.
Welcome, Andrew.
And. Lively crowd today.
Surely got him before lunch.
Right?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it is a late one, so that, this particular item, um, I know Lisa Ramsey is taking lead on that. She is the Assistant Director of Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership, and she has reached out to Mahoney County, who we work closely with on these types of projects, City of Warren, our office, and other stakeholders to, um, first inquire on who would like to take this on. I believe this is new funding available through ARPA, and so, um, based on her feedback, they decided to move forward with applying for it. The only cost still to them being able, being the eligible applicant is that the commissioners authorized them to be. Be lead program, so that's what this letter will do, uh, submit an application, honor it before, I think September. Our office will work closely with, our office does undertake a housing program.
Uh, number sixteen, the change order, Gary, you want me to wait on this one also?
This one, Julie, also.
Okay.
This is the West Farmington Sanitary Sewer Project, uh, it is funded through the Twenty-One Program, the grant deadline is August thirty-first, so, uh, we're extending the very last. For back extension through August thirty-first to allow additional time for our combined health district to, uh, finalize the plumbing inspection. So, we have to pass through lateral connected, they go out and check the, if it meets our plumbing. And Mr. Pop is out there with we. High restoration. So that is what this is.
Uh, number seventeen, these are annual supply fleet permits, uh, KMB, King Sanitary, PNT Leasing, Cooper and Son's Carriage, and, from the engineer's office, where we're very familiar with these. Number eighteen, right-of-way permits Dominion East, Dominion East, Village Energy, Village Energy, AD Excavating, Green Tech, and Northeast Ohio Natural Gas Corp. Um, same thing, and we need to close the road at Phillips Rice located in Mecca Township.
They added, they did add another one.
They did?
Yes, right before.
Okay, well, this, this one here though is, uh, Monday, August twenty-first to Friday, September fifteenth. Um, closing location nine-hundred-and-forty-two feet south of Griffith Drive for culvert replacement. The detour will be, uh, Phillips Rice, West on Eighty-Eight, South on Forty-Six, East on Route Five, so you're gonna have to go all the way around the block. And what is number twenty, or, I'm sorry, number nineteen?
Yeah, it's Austin Town, yeah.
Okay, this one is gonna be Austin Town Warren Road, this will be August twenty-first to August twenty-fifth, uh, for bridge inspections, Weatherfield Township, and that's, uh, Depot Street and Yorkie Young, and that's, uh, right around the Meander area. Okay, there's two of those. Number twenty, authorize the board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bid for the twenty-twenty-three road program. Resurfacing Madison Road in Brookfield, Howland-Wilson Road in Squires Lane in Howland Township, Jones Road in Liberty Township. No general funds required, partially funded by Public Works, rent obtained through East Gate Regional Council of Government. Yeah, nobody from the engineer's office? Okay? And twenty-one, to approve Trumbull County Capital Improvement Program for the thirty-eighth round of funding for the state capital improvement program, and thirty-six round of funding for the local transportation improvement program, uh, program year twenty-four, program year twenty-five, and to submit the program pre-haps for District Six Public Works Integration Committee, honored before August thirty-first. And the projects for the program twenty-four, Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer, Everett Hall, uh, Warren Municipal Road, Brookfield Avenue, there's Colberg improvements, Larchmont Avenue resurfacing. Um, there's one in there, Gary, Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement.
Yeah, uh, Gary Newbrough Sanitary Avenue, uh, Commissioner, this is annually, um, sanitary engineers and the highway engineers. We submit our applications to the District Six Integrating Committee, and this is for the Ohio Public Works Commission grants. They also have loan monies, and, uh, this is our lineup of projects for this year, uh, and Crane Drive is our number one project going.
Twenty-two, notify Department of Liquor Control Public hearing not requested on liquor permit application listed. Shorty's Place Steve's Backroad Bar and Grill on Highland Avenue, Warren Township. Transfer Class D five from Louis's Italian Kitchen and Patio to Brookfield Pizza and Drafthouse. Uh, doubling as Papa Louis's Italian Kitchen and Patio. And then Class D new Jet Black Capital, Wilson Sharpsville Road, Bezetta Township. Twenty-three, grant permission to Warren Township Police Department to close the road at Batsham School for Parade and Car Show, as listed North Levitt Road in Warren Township, closing between North Levitt Road and West Margaret Street, the Parkman Road, uh, Sunday, August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, so that's already passed. And that concludes everything, and no other ones there, Lisa?
No.
Okay, that's all the regular business?
Well, we got the ones to go back to, Commissioner.
We, we're gonna do that.
All right.
Now, I was getting to that, so we'll go back to sanitary engineer change orders. And, uh, again, Commissioner Cannon-Lamesa is no longer here, so I'll have to advise you to make sure you get with Mauro, uh, later today or tomorrow morning to bring him up to speed on this stuff too, or at least, um, where he can understand what you're gonna teach me here. Or maybe he can listen on the radio later.
Okay.
And, uh, and be brought to speed that way, or educated that way.
All right, um, well, there's two members in my staff, there's Scott Herner, our Assistant Sanitary Engineer, and Bill Durst, our Wastewater Superintendent. They have been, um, the primary, uh, personnel from the sanitary engineers that have overseen not only the upgrade of the Mosquito Creek project, but also the Brookfield project, um, uh, the upgrade of the Brookfield plant. Uh, for number nine, well, that was for number ten, I'm sorry. For number nine, this is for our, uh, new water tank out in Mineral Ridge, and this project is winding down, and this is a change order for, uh, one of the contractors, this is Contract B. Scott, do you wanna take it from there?
Yeah, Commissioner Scott Herner, sanitary engineer's office. The change order number one, final with utility contracting, um, the amount is eighteen thousand eighty-two dollars one cent. By the total contract to one million one hundred and eighty-six thousand, hundred and sixty-five dollars and one cent. I'll run through the seven items quickly. Item number one and two are related, uh, due to the proximity of the water main on the east, I'm sorry, on the west side of State Route Forty-Six, as well as a water line we had to cross underneath on the east side of State Route Forty-Six. It's all more prudent to actually open, cut the road, because with both of these areas, we would have been well into the pavement. We've done with Thogaw, they agreed to allow us open cut, so there were some additional costs. The material associated with, associated with that, particularly with the Bethel Iron Pike. Item number three was additional fitting necessary for the tie into existing twenty-inch Mahoney Valley Sanitary District mainline. Due to the age, the outside diameter was not traditional, so they had to actually order each standard, not standard, had to get a different pipe or.
Fitting.
Fitting for, thank you. Item number four was additional six-inch insertion valve that was necessary. Item number five was to increase electrical service into booster stations for one amp, one hundred amp to two hundred amp. Item number six was a flow meter replacement associated with electrical work at the water booster station. The original meter provided through the project was not communicating correctly through our data system. Item number seven was contract time extension for thirty-eight days for substantial completion and sixty days for final completion. Finally, uh, item number eight was a final twenty, twenty adjustment for non-performing items. And, uh, also within this, it says, uh, pending approval from the Ohio Department of Development, they've already reviewed and approved it.
So there's twenty-seven thousand four seventy-five we're not doing.
Yes.
So we thought we were gonna do, and eighteen thousand more that we did, so we've still got a net gain of savings.
Yes.
From the original contract.
An increase in the contract amount, they got twenty-seven thousand, come before night and helped us out.
There's about forty-five thousand in changes here, Commissioner. Then you subtract back to twenty-seven thousand, leaves us at eighteen thousand.
Number ten.
All right. I will let Scott start off with this one also, this is, uh, um, I, I can say that, uh, between Scott and Bill Durst, they have gone over these figures ad nauseum, they've negotiated these costs, and, um, there is quite a lot involved in this, but Scott, you can take it from there. And Scott, you don't have to go over nothing bold thing on here, we can see that, sure.
Well, don't get, consult, we'll get into that, but I just wanna kind of make a quick opening statement. Scott Herner, sanitary engineers. Commissioners, the next agenda we are about to present is change order number nine, final for the Mosquito Creek wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project. I would like to note that this is one of the largest projects we have undertaken in my twenty years with the department. Improvement slash expansion projects of this type typically only come around every twenty-five, thirty years, and this is, has this. Useful life of equipment in these types of facilities. The last upgrade of the Mosquito Creek facility was nineteen eighty-six, thirty-seven. Needless to say, these types of projects are of large scale, present numerous challenges, and often encounter many unknowns during the duration of the project, coupled with the fact that the facility must remain operational during. With this, I'll leave, uh, turn this over to Tom Goldrich, Principal of, uh, CT Consultants.
Good afternoon, everybody, thanks for hearing us, um, for, uh, pass up the opportunity to, we're running out of opportunities to express our appreciation for the. Helped on this very significant project, uh, I'm Tom Goldrich, uh, project manager for this, uh, project. Um, ex-CT consultants with me is Juan Aiken, a vice president of, uh, environmental sector. Also, um, our primary sub-consultant is MS. John Pirco, project manager, and Craig Fabe, our construction manager. Craig and I were the, uh, in the trenches, was working with Scott and Bill for the most part, and so we can correct it. Very proud of this facility. It's, uh, it's putting out tremendous effort, very high-quality effort, and our expectations. And, um, I've done under a long period of time, and we were contracted in two thousand and fifteen. Our job number that we're tracking, so we're, we're, it's an eight-year planning, design, construction project, um, for office of plant expansion upgrades and. So, this is, we're sending our final, uh, change order. Great facility. Do the art. Their, uh, process out there. Of that. But, you know, if there's any questions on the list, I know for the final change order, it's, uh, sitting over a period of time because of logistics. But, uh, this I believe is our final. So, uh, if we're, uh, have. Item or any.
It's the only thing that jumps out at me, and it sounds stupid, but, uh, non-podable water in basement garage, eighteen thousand dollars. That one just seems out of place compared to everything else. Uh. Bill?
Which item number is that, sorry?
It is, uh, number sixty, first page at the bottom, second.
The item number is probably COP.
One eighty-nine.
Yeah.
That's Craig Fabe, MS Consultants, uh. That particular item, uh, in our plans, had removing resource water in operations building, and once we got underway with construction. Water, um. One, two, three, four.
And so that's like running lines for the guys who use spigots or whatever inside there?
Yeah, service water is not drinkable water, but it's, you know. The green, I think, you know, you're not spending money on potable water.
Well, what is the source of the non-podable water from this?
Builders, sanitary engineers, yes, these non-podable lines were, uh, installed just like Tom mentioned, so we weren't paying for, uh, water, we were just washing down the drain to hose off. We're getting this from our final F plant, which has been separated through the whole process, like Tom said, very high-quality F plant. It's not been disinfected yet, but. It's not been disinfected yet, but we use it to clean down and hose down equipment, smores, things like that.
That's why I was just wondering, it's a water treatment plant, but then we're paying for water, it looked like, so I understand now if it's a reuse. If it's the plumbing to get to that point, I understand better. Okay, so gonna come out to one million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, five seventy-six? Gary, this is the final bill, you think, this is the final thing, and?
Yeah, this is my understanding, this is the final change order to close out the contract with APO Horo. Uh, our original contract amount with them was around thirty-one million and something, Scott?
Thirty-one million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand.
So about thirty-one point eight, so we're still less than ten percent in increase on these. I do know that, uh, when I was reviewing this, uh, I was looking at, you know, how many things were unknown before we even got into it. Uh, things that you wouldn't know until you start digging, or until you start taking out this equipment, or take out this wall, or take out this concrete slab, and, uh.
Was it almost a re, whole rebuild at thirty-four million dollars, or was it?
Oh, yeah, yes, Commissioner, yeah, for, for the most part, uh, yeah.
Repurpose the structures, but basically all new equipment.
Yes. But a significant amount of this was things that you just, there's no way you can know before you go into it.
This is located where?
This is the one at the end of Anderson Avenue where Dog Pound is, you were down there before for a meeting with us, okay. Um, then there were other items that.
Is this the first, that's the first place the water comes into, uh, when it comes out of Mosquito Creek? Or does it go to somewhere else?
That's the first place water it goes to when it comes in people's toilets, this is a waste treatment plant. When people flush the toilets, take a shower, uh, or something down their sink, this is where it all ends up here.
Gotcha.
So we are taking all that waste coming in on the sewage lines and treating it and making it into, uh, clear, uh, effluent before we discharge it into the, into Mosquito Creek.
Gotcha, just the other way, this is what we're putting back in, not what we're.
Right, right.
Not what's being taken out.
Right.
Intend to be here tomorrow, Commissioner.
Yeah, if, if there's more questions tomorrow from the other commissioners, that is, they, yeah, we intend to have, uh, the consultants here also to explain any of the different line items. I do know that there were some things in one that was also designed that if we were all knowing, we would've had it included them in the project. But as you go through the course of a project, it's, oh, wait a second, uh, our sludge process workers, they would like to have a sink over here to be able to, uh, wa, you know, clean and wash their hands, a, and they didn't have one up on the second floor where their office is. You know, you, you, as you're going through the project, we would've put it, we would've put all this in here originally if we would have been all-knowing before we started.
We've had other change orders on this before me, that we've already approved and approved, this isn't just a buildup of years worth of change orders, this is just something.
Well, this is, this is an accumulation of them over quite a long period of time, uh, and I'm not really sure of the logistics of what takes so long to compile them and to, to get it, but I do know that the actual change order itself is over nine hundred pages thick.
Well, we have had eight change orders for this.
Yes.
So this is just number nine on the project.
Yes.
We took care of the first eight already, this is an additional one, the kind of the catch-all, end one, let's make sure we took care of everything before we say goodbye.
Right, and, and, and we are still within the ten percent contingency for the project.
Real quick, just to kind of, to go back to some of the change orders, I'm sorry, Scott Herner, Sanitary Engineers. Change order number one was reduction of fifty-two dollars. Change order number two was a four-six, hundred sixty-three day extension with no monetary adjustment. Change order number three was a reduction for ninety-four dollars, seventy-nine cents. Change order number five, change order. What was, what was going on there is we had a quantity amount for sludge removal pay item that we did not meet, uh, we, we got a credit for it.
We, we thought there was gonna be a lot more sludge in the lagoon than there actually was.
We had a credit that we were able to eat away from, fortunately. It wasn't until change order number six where we started to, after we ran that credit out, that we actually started it, like.
Very good, and Gary, I appreciate you bringing the team, an intimidating team here, this should work tomorrow.
Alright, well, we'll see how it goes tomorrow, Commissioner.
Today's our team of lawyers, they're gonna answer questions for us. Um, no, I appreciate everybody being here today, again, Commissioner Cannon-Lace had to leave, so at that time, I guess the first part of the meeting was deep funk. There were some other things I wanted to talk about with Commissioner Cannon-Lace, but he's not here. But just for the good of the order of things that happened in last week, we did go individually and look at a new potential site for the nine-one-one center. Um, we found another potential site through, uh, Port Authority for Dog Pound, but it seems like the first site. And while for that it's still gonna work better for us, but if we get snagged there as far as construction or finalizing the deal there with their zoning or anything like that, we have a backup potentially. And, uh, there's another spot for nine-one-one we're gonna look at this week, we've been invited to go look at. We did have a double ceremony this morning on West Warren, um, redevelopment site, where they're looking at putting manufacturer, manufacturers, that is the, uh, project with, uh, Mr. George. Uh, most every dignitary was there, the governor was there, the state treasurer was there, um, Jim Tressel, the mayor of Warren, council, board of directors, some of your guys. I have a great ceremony, about a hundred people, and, uh, it just gave a lot of hope for that neighborhood that used to be where you went to buy drugs, his upper body. And we now are gonna see the revitalization take place, one house, one neighborhood at a time because of this. And I'm very excited about that, and I think we're gonna see a lot more of that in the county. And I know some of you guys are involved in that, and, uh, appreciate that, and appreciate the partnership between private and government and that project. It was pretty awesome today, um, I guess that's really all we have, so.
One housekeeping issue, Jim Misaki, uh, since we now have a change in the clerk, uh, the previous clerk was forwarded from the current owner of the Best Western, um, Park Avenue Hotel here, um, that he wished to, to, uh, renew his lease. So, uh, that was forwarded by the clerk to the prosecutor's office, and they got, got an opinion on it. So I think that should be pursued by the current clerk to, uh, make sure that they, that the owner, his, his name will be on the email, uh, will, will either come to a meeting and formally present his request, or.
Or be on the parking lot, and they want, they want to lease it for months?
Yes, for a five-year period, subject to renewal, he has an option under the lease, so that's all I can say on the matter.
Okay, and one other thing from you, Mr. Misaki, I don't know if you got to it, we did talk at last week's meeting, we have a spreadsheet of everything we allocated and spent. Did we get the spreadsheet made up of everything that's still in the portal and that's not gonna address yet?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I also just have an update for you, 'cause you did request an update weekly from us.
Okay.
So I have that here for each of the commissioners.
Did you get the map, Mark?
I did, and it's on my little list, and I'm just gonna, I have a copy of my notes for each of you in there, as well as new spreadsheet, um, just to give you, I'll just really quick, because we're in a public meeting, so everybody knows what has been given. Um, we separated the allocated requests from the projects on hold to make it a little bit easier, easier. So you have two different spreadsheets in each packet. Um, on the spreadsheet for the allocated, we did make some changes, and I wanted to note those. We zeroed out the original request for the family court generator switch and marked as redundant, uh, leaving the second request for the lesser amount that's correct for Bill Hart. Uh, we corrected the salaries paid in twenty-two to revenue loss to just, uh, Trumbull County Sheriff's Office as nine-one-one was not subsidized, just the sheriff's office. It had, the, the old spreadsheet had both, because originally that was gonna happen, and that changed. Um, and nobody ever changed it initially. Um, we moved the nine-one-one phone stations, the mobile command post, and the nine-one-one request for marks into the revenue loss category. Um, per the attorney, the Marx Tower could not be moved into that category, and so it remains in the original column where it was. The estimate for the planning commission roof has been updated to what we were told approximately last week, and moved, it moved it to the revenue loss category. The changes noted above, um, do make the totals change, and the spreadsheet reflects those changes. I'm currently working on the map, um, I received the map from Sanitary Engineer, and because it's an engineer's map, it's very complicated. So I'm going to do some simplification on that.
Why don't you write in and, and send it back, we'll, we'll adjust it for you.
We, we can, we, we'll get it figured out, but, but it's.
You got four engineers in the parking lot.
I know, I know, I really appreciate it, and it's great, it's, and I do appreciate, right, and also, um, uh, Mr. Misaki had from you that list of who was affected and, um, how many households were affected in each place, and that's very helpful, we're gonna include that with it. So I've got that, and then we're going to, I've taken, um, my copy of your, of the allocated spreadsheet, I've started working through that, and I basically have it done, but I wanna check some things, so I don't wanna say I'm completely done, I'll say I'm working on it. Um, so I'm working on the locations for that, and then, um, I feel like I've identified, I feel like I've identified all of them, but I have some questions, so, uh, I put most of them. So that map is in progress, we'll just say that. And I also wanted to let you know that the Commissioner's website and the application website have both been updated with the September fifteenth deadline.
Uh, and on this new spreadsheet, I see, Ray, we still have almost ten point five million dollars sitting in there, so, so it's been shuffled around a little bit.
Yep, some things changed.
No money disappeared, no animals were injured in this.
(laughing).
Wrong place.
No, no, no animals or public officials were harmed in the making of this.
Not yet, not yet, Tuesday, Tuesday.
Yes, probably many trees, sorry.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the Goody County, good the order, yes?
I already mentioned the ERP revised rule, hopefully that's the last change they make. Um, I wanted to mention that the planning commission, uh, forbid and following up with prosecutor's, and recommendation to follow up with Corsa and the ARPA attorney. So when we get both of those back, we'll follow up with an addendum to that, um, document, that is less of, uh, re, re, that are distributed. Um, the bid opening for that is August thirty-first. Uh, we just sent out the survey to all the townships regarding large wind and solar farms, and we also sent it electronically, and I have a copy here for you.
Also, I also wanted to mention on August the thirty-first, if you've already not seen this correspondence, who's ever interested should think about reserving and attending the Meet the Business, it's the largest fundraiser for the Chamber. This year is, um, I think, unique because of a former citizen of the city of Warren, John Zabruk. I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name correctly, I didn't say my name, and this is Julie Green, although I think I have a recognizable person, so they sound like Lucy from The Peanut Foot, anyhow. Um, so John Zabruk, Zabruky, does anybody know this person, anyhow? He's from the city of Warren, he donated his Five Five collection to Trumbull County Historical Society, and the Chamber is hosting a fundraising event, teaming up with the Historical Society and honoring Mr. Zabruky for his significant donation, and, um, just wanted to mention that to the public at large, and I think it's, it's very, um, I think it's a great idea that the Chamber is partnering, partnering on this, because I, if, when this is, um, is fully developed, it is going to be a national draw, similar to the Rockwell Hall of Fame. As we all know, everybody loves Five Five, they love Comic Con, so that is what is being proposed here in the initial development stages. So August thirty-first, you can attend the event, and I believe there's also a fundraising event. Um, oh, and also September the sixteenth is the Oktoberfest fundraiser for the Historical Society.
Please hit that to our scheduler, so she can get copies to each of us.
Yeah, I will, so, yeah. So, I mean, those are, in addition to all of the other, uh, things on the square here, I think it's just, I believe, a, a good thing for our county.
And it's a fun event.
It is a fun event.
Anybody else?
Sean, I got three or four things to talk about, each one. My name is Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Uh, the first thing I'd like to talk about, I don't know if I'm gonna hear from the Treasurer's Department, is how or how not taxes are collected in Trumbull County. Uh, there's one specific property, now, Martha Yoder confirmed to me that the Treasurer's Office is responsible for collecting property taxes. But now there's one property in particular that I know of, it was fourteen forty-six Clements, uh, the house hasn't been lived in in years. Uh, I don't think the house is being kept up with. Property is owned by Randy Law, the former state rep, uh, former head, chairman of the Republican Party in Trumbull County. Uh, year after year, he goes and he doesn't pay the taxes. He pays tax one year, right before he announced that he was going to run against Mayor Doug Franklin. Right before that, he pays and he hasn't paid tax, it was like two grand. This is going on year after year, and I don't understand why, any special treatment is being.
Don't think anyone's getting special treatment, we've got a lot of people that are behind in taxes, and we, we had a list, and they do have a public list of that, there are some people with many, many years of taxes, and once they reach the threshold of where we need to get involved, that's where they go off to the ones that have the exorbitant amounts from year after year.
Do you know what that is?
I, I don't know what that is.
I, I, and I think I suggested to you that you speak with the Treasurer directly.
Yeah, I called the Treasurer's Office, I believe, over a year ago, and addressed it, and I didn't get anywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, you need, I, I mean, that's the first place you need to start with is that.
I mean, it's year after year, there's delinquents or currents, I mean, this is a big thing, this isn't like, he's, he's half a year behind, this is excessive.
Right, and Martha Yoder, auditor, and, and with all.
Well, he just did, and from what I know, he just didn't run last year, so maybe he's caught up, if you said, he pays it before he runs.
He likes to pay it by the end before he runs for office, so it looks good.
So he, he may be caught up as a now, that if he does.
I checked last night, they weren't.
Right, a, and I do know that, um, there are a lot of properties that have delinquent taxes, taxes. I also knew that, um, sometimes people get, couple things, uh, sometimes people get unpayment plans that aren't necessarily put out on there, so I don't know that, and I don't know if somebody's on a payment plan or not, that's, again, Treasurer's Office information. Um, and I also know that informally, because there are so many, um, sometimes if people pay a little bit, and they'll, you know, they don't go into foreclosure, and then they, they don't make any notice of it, and they pay a little bit, and it doesn't go into foreclosure. Um, just the other third thing, again, and I, I understand you wanting to do this in a public place, but.
Yeah.
The Treasurer is a separate office holder from me and from the Commissioners.
Okay.
And that's, um, those are his duties.
Alright, the second thing I'd like to add, to address, again, Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident, uh, Commissioner Frenchco, I see is not here, I was hoping she was gonna be here today, I guess. Uh, I'd like to address, uh, you know, a situation with her and Paula, you know, I didn't see that die out, so I came here to address it by threat. Uh, Commissioner Frenchco recently posted two posts on Facebook, uh, one regular post about the lawsuit, and then last night she went on Facebook Live and she did a rant where she basically takes no responsibility whatsoever for what happened with Paula. She's against it, uh, throwing everybody on the bus, from the Commissioners, to the insurance company, to every media outlet there is. Uh, I don't know, she, uh, looked like maybe she was on something last night when she was on there, and then she pulled the video back down. But, you know, this thing with Paula, and she says, and in the article, in the post, that Paula was a kind person. And you know, that's very upsetting for everybody who's been watching for two and a half years, while she abused Paul day in and day out, week after week, the entire time she's been in the Commissioner's Office, and now you wanna play like you're innocent, like you haven't done anything, you have no responsibility in what happened with that woman, serving. My question is, and, and she said recently that she's been listening to these workshops, so maybe she'll hear this, and she'll address it tomorrow, in the public meeting, in front of the public. My question is, it's a three-part question, does or has Ms. Frenchco suffered any mental health issues? Uh, has she ever? Uh, has she ever been treated for mental health? And has she on five separate occasions been pink slipped into a mental health facility? My question, maybe she will answer it in the next public meeting.
Of course, none of us can answer that here, and that's kind of private on the thing, but your question, your question's on the record. Well, this isn't a public meeting, officially, anymore, tomorrow's not here, but your question, issue, let's think it's.
The, the third thing is, you hit on it a little bit earlier, is the pound? Something's got to happen with the pound, I mean, it's, it's been on the back burner for years, and it just, it can't seem to get off that back burner. And they're suffering now, they're overcrowded, the dogs aren't being cared for the way they should be. They have no room to stand on the property they're on. And, I mean, this has been a long, ongoing thing. I just, I don't get it, like I said, it's got to get off the back burner. You know, every once, like once a month, you come here, you're, well, you know, we're talking this one, we're talking that, and it just doesn't ever seem to really move forward. Oh, that's terrible. Finally, the fourth thing, just out of pure curiosity. Is there any way possible that the Trumbull County Commissioners could assist Warren Township in getting body cameras into their police department? Now, I've been pushing for body cameras in that police department since 2014, when they, when the current, uh, police department at the time, their chief bishop raided my home without a warrant. Came in on one reason, and then while they were there, they targeted all my weapons, they took all my weapons. Then after it was all over, they threatened my wife and signed a consent warrant, a search. I've been, I've been pushing for, for cameras in that department, and this doesn't seem to go anywhere. Uh, and this is 2023, I mean, there should be cameras everywhere, you want out of the street, put a camera out.
Yeah, I, I don't, we have our own police department, the county runs, I mean, I don't know what we can do with the county, that sounds like a, a county's like a state or anything.
I just thought, while I was here, I'd bring it up.
Do we know it again?
Again, in front of the public, but I got nothing to hide.
But, but you understand where we are with that, that that's not our.
I didn't know if there's any way you could sit at all.
That's why I'm here. It's been addressed, maybe some will hear.
Maybe some of the public will hear, something will happen.
Anything else?
No, that's it, I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, well, I guess meeting adjourned, we don't need to vote with it, tomorrow's not it. Is that, at the, being in the microphone.